My name is Art Whitman. Before I bring this meeting to order, I just wanted to let you know that Dave Kernan's brother passed away today. It's been heavy on his mind for the past few weeks, or actually probably a month or more. So if you, I just ask that we kind of keep his family in their hearts and prayers if you chose. So with that, I'd like to bring this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order at 6:32 probably on Monday, August 21st, 2023. First order of business, does anybody have any conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
I just want to say that I am a part of Number 11, the Get On Board project. So when that comes, I will present, but just in the order of knowing where my interests lie.
Thank you, Martha. Yes. Okay, minutes. I have minutes for, we had a Zoom meeting just to pay some bills. I was present, Mike was here, and Martha, okay, was on the Zoom thing. So just the three of us entertain a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Moved by Martha.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, that passed 302. And I have August 7th. Let's see, I was here, Mike, Martha, Naomi, and Tony were all here. So entertain a motion to accept these.
So moved.
Moved by Naomi.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. I have a payroll warrant for $29,079.51.
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. We have a second payroll warrant, number four, and this one is for $28,527.74.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. And I have check warrant number seven for $67,619.78.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Martha. Items over a thousand. BCRC, no, I'm sorry, Blue Cross Blue Shield, $9,426. BCRC, $5,000. Bennington Tire Corporation, $1,371. Cartographic Technologies is $3,800. This is for tax mapping. Emmerich Sales and Service, $1,782. GA Boat Fuel, $1,826. KES Incorporated, $12,526. MSK Engineering, $6,770. TAM, $9,614. Camerac Tree Care, $2,500. Moment for Crush Drone, $1,013. Wholesale Distributors, $3,940. Williamy Daily, $2,899. That's it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. Does anybody have any announcements? Public comments? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Treasures report.
Evening, Naomi.
Hi, everybody. Can we look at the cash flow, please? Okay. Maybe just the top half. That's good. So a couple of interesting things here. That third line there is tax receipts. That tells you the tax bills are mailed. We have gotten about 10 undeliverables back already. If you have not gotten your tax bill, please give me a call. We need to get it to you somehow. There might be something wrong with the address if you have not received it yet. I have, I'm slowly working my way through the transfers. So people who have recently sold their home, we ask you to try to get it into the hands of the new person if you can, but if you don't have a mailing address for them, I probably do, so I'll be following up on those. But if it's easy for you to get it to the new owner, that would be kind of you to do that. So you see down below, we did do a, oops, not that far. Yeah, no, right where we were, sorry. We also did a draw on the line of credit of almost exactly the same amount we have now taken in in taxes. That was, you know, playing the, the timing game there. I would love not to have had to make that draw, but we did get pretty low, so I, I did feel it was prudent. It was like one truck repair away from our running out of cash. So I did do that, that one draw. That's clearly the only one we will need to do. So now down to the, down to the bottom, Jen. Thank you. So you can see our current cash balance, if you took out those $200,000, would be in the danger zone. So that's why I did do that draw. So this is the, from now on, we'll be, we'll be fine for cash. So yeah, it's, the main thing is if you, please, when you do get your bill, you should have it now, please open it, please look at it, please give me a call if you feel that you're paying the wrong tax rate for your education. Please call me if you feel that there is a state payment that you are owed that is not appearing. I probably will tell you just to give it time because Montpelier is underwater and there's a huge backlog on processing people's homestead and household income declarations. So probably we all need to be patient, but I'm also hearing a lot of reports of people who had their taxes done by a nationally known tax preparer who dropped the ball on declarations. That happened to my mom. So we're having to follow up on doing that. There's still time. You'll get a little penalty that this nationally known company is unlikely to be willing to pay for, although they should. So please, when you get your tax bill, please do yourself a favor and open it. This is a very expensive mistake that could have been potentially made. So, and if you, if you are concerned, give me a call and I can put you in touch with the people who can, can fix the problem. But if you take your tax bill and put it away until November 9th, you could be making a very, very expensive mistake. If we want to take a real quick look at the reserve accounts, Jen, I have very little to say about it, but there we go. Very little going on except for, you see the 260 line down there, about the sixth one down is, that's late water payments. They're still coming in slowly.
You want a bigger?
No, no, I think it's all right. It's, it's, yeah. And the other things in the debit column are just money due to the general fund for checks that you wrote out of the, out of other reserve accounts. So that, that was just keeping things clean. I will remind you that the professional auditors are coming later this month. So that's going to be on top of taking in taxes and dealing with people's problems. It's going to be a fairly intense couple of days towards the end of the month. I think that's all I have to say. Any questions about any of that?
Is this the yearly thing for the auditors?
Yeah, they always come once before the end of the fiscal year and then once after.
Okay, I was going to say, I thought we just went through that.
Yeah, they, they have one day where they are sort of getting everything prepared for the audit and then the actual audit happens two days later in, this year in August. It's probably, it's better, it's a very inconvenient schedule, but it, it kind of has to happen this way because if it were any later than they wouldn't get the final report in time for us to include it in the town.
Town report.
So it's, it's really, we're locked into it. It is, it's not, it's not ideal.
It just seems like we just went through this.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. Believe me, I couldn't agree with you more.
Do you want to hold the sign, Lawrence?
I, I think I won't, I don't, well, yeah, actually, maybe I'll take them and I'll put them in my, in my office. So any questions about anything else? Okay. Please, please, please open your tax bills, do yourself a favor.
Thank you, Mel.
Okay, Tim?
Move this chair. I don't, I don't know if we're close enough to get the job to wire. Is that, can you hear me now? I'm Tim Skoggin, and I am the Shasbury representative to the Southern Vermont Communications Union District. I'm here with Michael Corey, who is our alternate from Shasbury, but he is also the vice chair of the, of the CUD. We were all at a event, an event recently up on Bromley Mountain. It was called a ribbon cutting, but it was to celebrate essentially the completion of the fiber optic network in the Southern Vermont Communication Union District service area, which is essentially Bennington County. This is a really big deal. It was attended by a number of important people, including Senator Peter Welch was there, who has been a backer of ours for trying to get rural internet for quite a while. In case you don't remember, the CUD was formed back in 2019, trying to figure out how we were going to get internet into our rural area. Then the pandemic happened just months after the CUD was formed, and then we all realized just how important internet was when we were all trying to do Zoom over DSL lines. And then federal money got involved in several ways, which sped up the process a lot. And the Southern Vermont CUD was fortunate to be able to partner with Consolidated Communications to get a plan that reached everybody in the service area. And so we were able to act as a conduit for state and federal money to Consolidated Communications so that they could go to areas where it wasn't economically feasible for them to get to, the result of which is that essentially everyone in the area now has access to fiber optic internet, which means we are one of the most connected areas in the country right now. I ran the numbers recently, 95% of the addresses in this area are covered by Phytium Fiber. The other 5% either have cable or there is some consolidated cable out there, I'm told. I don't know where it is, but it is remarkable that we've gone from an area with rural internet problems three years ago to having some of the best internet in the world right now. And at that ceremony, Peter Welch presented us with this certificate, which I will now pass on to the town, which recognizes our accomplishment as an official Gig Town, meaning we are fiber optic, everybody in town can get gigabit internet. Every time I look, it's faster. I think you can get 2 gigabit internet now to your house. With the fiber optics in place, it'll get faster in the future because all they, every few years, the electronics gets better, they can pump more information through those fiber optic lines, and the fiber optic lines themselves will carry internet far into the future as far as any capacity dreams we might have about doing 8K Zooms or something like that. So we are, we are wired. So I will hand this over to you, Art.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I hope we can display that somewhere where, maybe in the clerk's office if she'll let us, and so people will, who come in looking to find out if they want to buy a piece of property here will know that they're not going to have any internet problems anymore.
I'm curious, how many CUDs were there in the state?
There are, I believe, 10. Are there more? Is it up to 13 now? Yeah, pretty much the whole state is blanketed in, in one CUD or another.
But this is the first CUD to be, be completely?
This is the first one to complete their network, yeah. They are all taking different approaches. Most of the approaches involve some sort of public-private partnership. By way of history, recall that the first CUD was EC Fiber. They started some 10 years ago. They pioneered this whole CUD process. They formed their own internet company. This was a kitchen table discussion in East Central Vermont that involved some people who happened to run a local telephone company way back then. They turned that local telephone company into an internet company and they, they built their own fiber network. Various CUDs are doing some combination of creating their own company and building their own fiber network to what we did, which was partner with Consolidated and just act as a conduit to get federal money to them so that they could cover everyone.
Thank you.
But they are all in various stages of progress. They're all getting things done. A number of them are starting to, to serve their first customers right now.
Thank you, Tim.
One last thing I want to mention, when I kept saying we are essentially covered now, the, the plan with Consolidated had three phases. Phase one was last year, that's when Shasbury got covered. Phase two is being completed now as we speak, which involved most of the money that the CUD was able to bring to the table and get to people who don't have any internet at all right now. And then there are a handful, and by handful, I think the number is 20, locations that we just as of yet haven't figured out how to get to. And they are like edge cases. An example that Michael told me about is a case down in Powell, where there are three people, there are three locations in Vermont at the end of a road, but you get to the road from Massachusetts. And so for Consolidated to figure out how to get in there would be prohibitively, prohibitively expensive. And so Michael is, and some other people are looking at, you know, how we get to those people, maybe by partnering with a provider in Massachusetts who can run a cable up that road. But everyone will get covered. That is part of the deal with the federal and the state funding is that it has to be a universal service plan and that anybody who is on the grid, on the electric grid will eventually get internet one way or another. So it's coming. And Martha, yours is coming too.
I am so excited. When it comes, I will be right on board.
Yeah, I believe the wire is completely done in our area as far as running down the road. Consolidated is, as you might guess, has lots of orders for people who want it to run from the road up to their house, and they're servicing those as fast as they can. But soon, very soon.
Thank you, Tim, for your mention. Michael?
Thank you.
Pleasure having you here.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, really.
Okay, next on the agenda is roadside, roadside debris, trash cans, and so on. Obviously, Dave isn't here. He was working on something. He found a state ordinance that could probably, with a few changes, some words, might work here. I don't know what that is, so obviously, we won't be talking about it tonight, but it is in the works, I can tell you that, okay? DPW report? I think Mike, Mike sent you something?
He did. Roadwork for the next two weeks, replacing six more culverts on Buck Hill Road, repaving culverts across, oh, you can see this.
Yep.
So I didn't have to read it. There we go.
Yep, finish up ditching. Buck Hill, sketch for the week of September. So that's during school, but that's.
Yeah, for some reason that was pushed back. I know it was for the last week of August at a previous select word meeting, so for some reason it was moved.
The blacktop company was locked into making a special kind for what was going on Route 7, and so therefore, they couldn't make two different kinds all at the same time. Okay. Remember, we gave Mr. Kurtz, awarded him a drainage project, okay? Roadside mowing will start next week. Road grading, dangerous road. Okay. And I've got news that our new truck that was ordered like two years ago is in at the body company. It's all done. The truck dealer wants Mike to go up and see it himself rather than bring it down and then have to send it back if something's wrong with the plow or something like that. So next week, Mike will be going up, making sure it's what he ordered. If he brings it back, the dealer services it, and then we have to pay for it before delivery. So we will either be paying for it at our next meeting or we may, may have a special one before, depending on how quick Mike wants it, okay?
What kind of truck is it?
It's a, it's a dump truck with plow, wing, and all that sort of stuff. We're replacing trucks and we have all the money set aside in reserves, and every year we put money in there and we try to keep up with inflation. They're getting more and more expensive and all that sort of stuff, but we, this is what the reserves are in. I got to say that this town is very lucky to have the foresight that we went and did all this so that we never have to borrow money or anything. The money is always there if we just keep on top of it, so, okay? And probably about, it'll be time to order no one pretty soon, so.
Yes. Get a lot of wear and tear on our roads.
Okay, any, any questions on the, on the report or anything, any comments? Okay, Martha, you're?
Yeah, I am going to talk about the Get On Board project, which is a really exciting new program from the Southern Vermont Economy Project, which is Bennington and Wyndham Counties working together to kind of create an economic regional zone. I had the privilege to participate on the town of Shasbury's behalf on our ARPA committee and how we work to kind of work on our, how we're allocating money and things like that. And one of the things that came out of that conversation back in March when we went to that meeting was that many towns in our region are struggling to get folks on boards, whether they're reusable boards or nonprofit boards. And so the Southern Vermont Economy Project came together and decided they were going to start a program to get local leaders, younger local leaders, to get on these boards and do mentorship and training programs so that they understand how to interact with boards and how to participate. We have launched kind of this program to have folks get involved. GNAT had a program quite recently that I was a part of that will be going out on all of the public newscasts. You got information in your mail. They're going to have four sessions that are in-person, three that are virtual. They'll be all around kind of our communities in Wyndham and Brad, and Bennington Counties, and focus on different topics every, every month that they meet. They have some funding to help with childcare and other things, so if that's a prohibitive cost, they have ways to kind of fund things financially for folks. They really want to get people involved and on board, so if it's something that you're interested in, we'll put it up on the website. I don't think we've gotten there quite yet, but we'll make sure that happens. So that's my plug for that. One of the other things that I wanted to bring to the select board's attention, this program is being funded by a host of different funding sources, but one of them is hoping that select boards will get involved. So to participate in this program, each participant, it costs $150 for the entire program, which is quite a deal when you see all of the kind of things that are happening. And, and I think we'll pay a lot of dividends down the road if we can get more folks. I know for the town of Shasbury, there are several people that are interested in participating. One of them has said economic hardship would prevent that person from participating. And so one of the things I would like to bring and ask is if our town could sponsor that person with $150 to go to this program and, and keep working on that.
Okay.
I don't know if we need a motion or if there is a way to take the funding or if David isn't here.
I'll move that the town of Shasbury sponsor someone. We also have the option to sponsor two, of course, it says in the materials we got. Which, I mean, would have some benefits because there would be two people to talk to each other. I mean, that, you do get more than twice the bang for your buck with conference, things like that, if you send two people to something.
Okay, but do we have two people?
Well, we could solicit the second person. And this thing that, I mean, David sent it around to all of us together, is really, they're, they're great. They sent us a whole little packet of stuff to.
They have all of the materials.
Post on the website.
And all of the things.
To send down to Frontboard Forum.
And soliciting people who are interested. And there's quite a lot of interest. They're going to cap it, I believe, at 40 participants this year, and, and they've already gotten folks from kind of all over our kind of districts to do this. I think a lot of people are interested, and then there's just the barrier of kind of being. And then there's just the barrier of kind of figuring out, how do I do this? What do I need to do? What do I need to have as kind of, to be a participant in these projects? So, I think it would be great.
So, is your motion for $300?
What do people think before they make that motion?
I think we do make a motion to provide assistance for two people that we can fill those positions. You know, we provided money for up to two people, and we can retroactively find people to fill those.
Right. And I think we already have one, at least from Meg, who is the program director for this, has reached out to me and asked if the town would sponsor this person to be part of this.
So, is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion. That the town of Shastberry should sponsor two people to go to the.
Get on board.
Get on board project.
Dave will find the money.
Perfect. Yes, and I feel bad he's not here to say.
We have a second, by Tony.
I feel confident he would want to do it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, Kerry, 500.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just, I always like to bring up the fact that they used Shastberry as an example on how to spend ARPA money, didn't they?
They did, yes, for the Southern Vermont, yes, Economic Project Committee. And they have, we've been a model for many other towns and other folks. And I've had folks reach out to me to kind of talk about our process and how we did it very equitably and were able to really communicate with a wide swath of our community and use it for something that the town was doing.
Yeah, I think we did a really good thing.
And I forgot in the announcements, and I guess maybe if I might, a segment at the moment. We have sent out a town survey to all of the town at the moment. We are in an exciting phase of using the ARPA money and we're working to try to figure out what our community center and town green, which is right outside, next door to Cold Hall, will look like and will be. We are looking to get information. It's a really quick survey. It is online. We've put it on Facebook. It is prominently on our town website. There will be some paper copies at some local businesses at Clearbrook and also at the Chocolate Barn and at Pollin's. So, if you need to do it on paper. Yep, there will be some. It will be returned here to Cold Hall, and you can register kind of your interests and what the next steps of this project will be. It's going to help us figure out and find grant opportunities to match the funding that we've received as a town to start really working on figuring out things. Some things have already started happening on the town green. And you've probably noticed that it has a nice seating on it now. So, we'll be able to do things on it this fall. So, we're excited about that. So, please fill that out. The deadline is September 4th to fill that survey out. Yes. 11:59.
Thanks a lot. I usually bed by 10:00.
Are you recruiting, Martha?
Are you recruiting?
Are you recruiting people for Get On Board?
So, I have chatted with a few folks, and they have put me the picture of one of the ad campaigns that are out there. So, I think that there's a lot of interest. And certainly, if anybody has interest in doing this program or knows somebody, feel free to send it on because it really, I think, will be a really well-thought-out, good kind of solid education of how to get involved in your town.
Okay. Any other discussion? Very good. Next on the agenda is proposals to have property record cards online via NIMRIC.
Yes.
I don't understand it, but I guess somebody does.
A lot of people come into the assessor's office asking for Lister cards. And Gina, the clerk, spends an awful lot of time doing Lister cards. And NIMRIC has a system for $500 a year. You can put it online, just like our land records system. And it would be $500 setup charge and $500 a year. And it would be very simple.
So, it'd be $1,000 the first year?
Exactly. I believe that's the case. Yes.
And what's on the card? Why do people want to see what's on the card?
I don't work in the assessor's office, but it has everything.
All the information.
All the information about the home, the land, everything you need for tax purposes, real estate purposes.
So, will this be accessible through?
Yes. Just like for the land records. They'd be able to log in, just like, but for NIMRIC, yeah.
Yeah. Good.
And we would not charge because we don't charge now. And it would be more of a headache to charge just for access and keeping track of all that. So, and if we did charge, it would only be 10 cents a page, like now, if we charged. And it's a record. Keep in mind, we're going to charge 10 cents a page. That's why we don't charge.
So, you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we put the cards on NIMRIC.
Okay. I have a motion that we will put the Lister cards on NIMRIC so the public can get it without coming into the office. Do they have to come in the office to get on NIMRIC?
They do have to come in. And it's more open access for people, you know, and citizens to be able to get what they need at any time.
But it's not something they do in their house?
They would be able to do in their house. Yes. Yeah, just like they can search land records now from home.
Yeah.
Right?
So, I have a motion?
I second it.
Naomi, second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, Kerry, 500. So, every couple of years, there is what's called a memorandum of understanding with little town or, it's not a town, it's a.
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated. It's a GOR.
GOR. Unincorporated GOR.
It's a GOR.
Of Glossombury.
It's a GOR. Yeah. Yeah, you have to look it up. Only in Vermont. G O R.
I think like a GOR in your.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not written.
Yeah. I knew somebody from a GOR.
Yeah, so they don't have a select board or anything?
Right.
And that sort of stuff? Somebody, the state, the state claws a road. We, if we help them, we don't charge them. They're allowed to use our dump facilities if there's a fire, our fire department.
So, there's unincorporated?
Yes.
I think so.
So, is Somerset and a few other towns.
Yeah.
I don't, I think they pay their taxes to the state. Is that not right? I don't think those taxes come here. I'm weighing over my head, but I.
I think so. I think so. And they contract with.
Up their services.
Adjacent municipalities for services.
Yes.
Who represents them to do that contract?
They have a, they meet as, yeah, as a GOR.
As a GOR?
Yeah. It's an old English term.
Ricky Harrington.
Okay, I'm like, it's one of the, yeah. I'm like, I think it's about the same person for many years.
And his title is the supervisor.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, this, like I said, this just agrees that we would help them. They're allowed to use the dump and so on and so forth. If they get their stickers and pay like everybody else. If there's a fire, we take care of them. And we will not charge them for any of the services that we provide for them. And this contract will be renewed no later than September 5th of 2025 for another two years and so on and so forth. So, this has been happening for quite a few years.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to sign the memorandum of understanding between the town of Shastberry and unorganized town of Glossombury for municipal services.
Moved.
Moved by Mike.
Seconded.
Seconded by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, Kerry, 500. I will sign.
Written signature.
Yep.
I'm impressed.
It's a very fancy signature.
Yeah, it's very.
It's a real John Hancock, right?
It looks exactly like John Hancock.
I didn't expect anything else from that.
I know, I'm like, that's him.
I knew somebody who lived in a GOR. They moved in and doubled the population. And they had their town meeting in their living room. And they would serve like supper and stuff. Yeah, I think there were like 11 people in the GOR.
Wow.
Up north.
Well, there's not that many.
Very many in Glossombury, right?
No.
28 or something?
Are there that many?
Well, there's several families that moved in at the very end of the.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That have, I think, doubled the population because there's a school bus stop there now. I was like, wow.
Wow.
When I drove by one.
Do you have any other business? That's all the time on the agenda right now?
This meeting is Tuesday, September 5th because of Labor Day holiday. Enjoy Monday, everyone.
It starts very early.
And, yes, we have a meeting and then a water for the meeting.
Yes.
But it's just Tuesday. And it starts at 5:00 PM on Tuesday before.
Review of action items. For this one, just the, we're going to ask that they.
Do the sponsorship. And I'll talk with Dave and Meg and get them in contact to talk about that sponsorship of the teaching.
Any other action items?
Do you want to take care of the, the, uh, getting the information out to the press kind of thing? The press kit?
Oh, yeah, the press kit. Uh, would you mind doing the press kit? Okay, so we'll get it to you then, I'm sure.
Still really, you know. Yeah. I'll coordinate it, tell them all we got.
Excellent.
This was on the table when I got here.
Oh, it's for me.
Okay. And when is the meeting, when September?
We should have announced that. I'm sorry.
Should we, that now in other business?
Yes, so on the 30th. I think it's the 30th of this month.
Yep, August 30th.
At 6:00 PM, there is a second public hearing sponsored by the Planning Commission on the Enhanced Energy Plan in Shastberry. And it will be hosted by the Planning Commission, but VCRC is going to be there presenting their first draft. And they are very much wanting public input.
Here.
It will be here in Cold Hall at 6:00 PM. It'll also be on Zoom. And any way that people can attend to try to give a sense to the VCRC and the Planning Commission of what kinds of preferred sites we would like to put into the Enhanced Energy Plan, what kinds of limitations on renewables development here.
Good.
So, it's very important. We can't really do this plan without the public.
Thank you. Anything else? Several things. So, with that, entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's something else. Moved by Mike.
Seconded.
Seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, Kerry, 500.